We're going to call our meeting to order. Got seven o'clock. Calling the meeting to order. We can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and I just want to mention to everyone that this is being recorded so that anyone who wants to view the meeting later or anyone else can watch it, so I just want to announce that. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We've got a number of announcements, so bear with me here. We have our Spring Clean Drive from March 20th to May 30th. 2025 Montgomery County is collecting essential toiletries and cleaning supplies for low-income families served by the Department of Health and Human Services. Montgomery Township is assisting them by hosting collection boxes in our Township Building and our Community and Recreation Center. We have the Montgomery Township Sisterhood Supply Drive is now underway, so we're accepting donations of hygiene products that will be delivered to Mitsfor Circle to support local women in need. Collection boxes again will be available here at the Township Building and the Community and Recreation Center throughout the month of April. Globo, the Board of Supervisors is pleased to announce the launch of a new language interpretation service for our partnership with Globo. This service allows us to better serve our multilingual community by providing on-demand access to professional interpreters in more than 430 languages. So whether over the phone or through video, the Township staff can now quickly connect with a qualified Globo interpreter to assist residents who speak little or no English. If a resident calls or visits the Township Building and needs language assistance, our staff will simply use a dedicated phone line to bridge the conversation, ensuring every resident can receive the help and information they need clearly and confidently. This initiative is part of our ongoing commitment to make Montgomery Township accessible and welcoming to all. Just curious, have we had to use it yet?
We've had two instances where it's had to be used. The first one, we weren't expecting, so it was really sort of like a fly by the seat of your pants. But I have to thank Rich Greer because I learned of this at a VMSC board meeting. Jefferson Hospital uses it and as well as VMSC for their patients because language barriers can sometimes be an issue on 911 calls. And I came in and told him the next morning that I heard about this and that afternoon he was on the phone with them and doing research and then the next thing I know it's being introduced to certain staff members and we get the first phone call and then we had another one.
Great. Wonderful. Okay. Red light cameras, the cameras have been installed on Route 202 Parkway, both directions at the intersection with Horsham Road. They have also been installed on Route 309, both directions at the intersection with North Wales Road. While there is a 60-day warning period from the date the cameras went live on March 14th, there have been 977 instances of motorists running red lights. So they are working. Bus patrol enforcement, since the start of the school year, Montgomery Township has been participating participating in North Penn School District's Bus Patrol Initiative to help protect the safety of students and their families. At bus stops in the township, we've had over 1,126 civil citations that have been issued in our township alone. And then last but certainly not least, the Wall That Heals, the Township Manager will give us an update on the planning for the July event.
Thank you. Believe it or not, there's 86 days until the wall arrives in Montgomery Township. I remember when, and Deb will know this, when it was 100 and some and we kind of both like had to catch our breath. I wanted to tell you that our sponsorships are starting to materialize and we've seen several come in. So we are going to be funding everything that we're trying to do and any money we have left over is going to be sent to the Vietnam Veterans Foundation for the Wall. We are arranging for tours. I was at an event in Bucks County a couple of weeks ago and a number of people came up to me that live in either senior housing or assisted living and they have those small buses and they wanted to know how they could have tours of the wall and we can arrange for that. We're also, our older students who are going to be in Kids University are also going to be invited to come as a group to see the wall. We're working on in-kind donations. We are fortunate that we have had a vendor who is giving us chairs for the opening ceremony at no charge to us. We have another vendor who is giving us golf carts so that we can have visitors who have mobility issues be able to get up to the wall safely and they are giving it to us for half price for all four days that we will be here with the wall. And then finally, I want to thank North Wales Area Library for generously taking cards from us and putting them at the counter so the patrons of the library can learn about the wall as well as Landscall Borough. John Erds, their manager, was gracious enough to take them for their library as well as their customer service counter in Borough Hall. And Deb has some information regarding the memory program.
Thank you, Carolyn. Just wanted to provide some information on the In-Memory Program. Since the Vietnam War ended, thousands of Vietnam veterans have suffered due to Agent Orange exposure, PTSD, and other illnesses as a result of their service. The Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund believes all those who served in Vietnam should be honored and remembered for their service. In the In-Memory Program, it enables families and friends of those who came home and later died the opportunity to have them be forever memorialized. We're grateful that Township resident and veteran Joyce Wicker has joined our committee and taken on the task of educating the public on this program. To date, Joy has distributed over 100 flyers and applications to individuals and organizations. She has at least 10 people who will be submitting applications for the In-Memory Program for their loved one and she is hoping many more will apply before the June 9th deadline so that their photos and stories can be displayed on the Mobile Education Center when it's here in Montgomery Township. Joy has shared the program with local veterans organizations as well as local veteran advocates and funeral homes. Her goal is to share the information with as many veterans' families as possible to honor all of those who served. So if you are a family or know a family of a Vietnam veteran who has passed away and you would like more information about the In-Memory Program, please reach out to the Township. We will put you in touch with Joy for more information. Thank you.
Okay, item number four, this is for public comment. Any persons wishing to make public comment during this meeting on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Saying none. Go on to item number five. This is the announcement of our executive session, Township Solicitor.
Thank you very much, Chair Ware Jones. The Board of Supervisors met in the executive session at 6:45 this evening to discuss a matter of litigation. This executive session was compliant with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number six, this is our motion to excuse me. This is our motion to approve the consent agenda as presented for the following minutes of the March 10th, 2025 Board of Supervisor Meeting. Payment of bills for March 24th, 2025 and escrow release number two for Atlas Broadband LLC. Any public comment? All those in favor? Item number seven, Montgomery Glen Homeowners Association donation to police on fire. In place of Chief Wegman, we have or Karen. Okay.
The Montgomery Glen Homeowners Association is attending tonight's meeting to present donations to the Montgomery Township Police Department and the Fire Department of Montgomery Township. Here to present the donations are Pat Carr, the President of the Board of Directors, and Dan Jenkins, member of the Board of Directors. The Association will be presenting two donations. The first donation is $5,000 to the Montgomery Township Police Department and the second is $5,000 to the Fire Department of Montgomery Township. The total donation is $10,000. This donation will positively impact the budgets of the Police Department and the Fire Department of Montgomery Township. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors recognizes the $10,000 donation from the Montgomery Glen Homeowners Association to the Police and Fire Department.
Sponders, thank you. And just so we officially have it on the record, I want to make a motion again that we recognize the $10,000 donation from Montgomery Glen Homeowners Association. Any public comment? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, item number eight, authorization to advertise amendments to Chapter 230, electronic vehicle charging battery storage. Marian McColl.
Thank you. Montgomery Township Department of Fire Services and Codes Department have been working together over the last several months to create an ordinance to regulate EV charging stations, energy storage systems, and the storage of electrical vehicle batteries. The Fire Department of New York City reports a 53% spike in fires caused by lithium-ion batteries in 2024, fighting 40 building fires across the city of which e-bike batteries have been the cause. These fires may result in explosions that create rapid fire spread and extension, trapping occupants due to the storage of e-bikes in areas of ingress egress. Montgomery Township staff consulted with third-party contractors to create an ordinance that regulates EV charging and enacts setback requirements to protect lives and property in the event of battery failure. This ordinance should help ensure the safety of homeowners, business owners, and visitors to the township. The proposed ordinance will amend Chapter 230, Article 21 miscellaneous provisions to provide a new section establishing regulations on the placement of and requirements for electrical vehicle charging stations. Following the authorization to advertise, the amendment will be forwarded to the Montgomery County Planning Commission for review, the Township Planning Commission, and then a public hearing before the Board of Supervisors for consideration and adoption.
I just wanted to mention, this is a really big issue for safety and this is something that's been reported amongst municipalities across Montgomery County and I'm sure beyond that as well because these fires not only are hotter, run hotter and longer, that to put them out is a huge effort and so it's really kind of, we're treading on new territory here and I think this is a public awareness issue that people don't realize when you bring these things into your house, into your garage and onto your property, that there is a risk involved. So I think this will hopefully bring that awareness to the public as well as bring things into conformity within our township. So thank you for bringing this forward.
I have questions regarding businesses or residents who may already have the electric vehicles and their charging stations. How does this affect them going forward?
They, well, it wasn't a requirement, so anything prior to the ordinance would be in place.
So if they need to replace
We've had permits submitted for residential because it is electric work and therefore that would require an electrical permit. So going forward, this also provides for the businesses and setbacks, especially for the higher degree levels and the higher batteries and the more heat that they transmit.
And to Ms. Stop's point, education with now if we enact this will be critical so that people who already have them in place, there's nothing that says they shouldn't evaluate the safety of them. And one thing that Chief Wegman during the discussions really emphasized was buying batteries off the secondary market that aren't the battery that goes with the device that you bought or for your car, you know, but especially on these e-bikes, you know. He was sharing with us regularly the articles that are coming out of New York City and to your point about, you know, the duration of the fire and the heat of the fire and the concern, so you know, it is new territory, but we wanted to get something on the books. We can always amend it as the technology changes, we can amend an ordinance, but to not have one in place, we feel, you know, jeopardizes the safety of our residents and business owners.
In addition, obtaining the permit ensures that you have the proper outlet and equipment to handle the charging of the vehicle.
I'm all for it. I just wanted to make sure that I didn't see anything within the ordinance saying there's a grandfathering or anything like that. So just wanted to make sure that businesses and residents that may have this already are protected.
Yes, if they currently don't comply with the setbacks that we're putting in place now, it's already been in place.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll make a motion to authorize staff to advertise ordinance 25-348, the proposed amendment to Chapter 230, Article 21 miscellaneous provisions of the Code of Montgomery Township as presented. Any public, any public comment? All those in favor? Okay, item number nine, requests for waiver fees, Mary Mother of the Redeemer Church, Carolyn McCreary.
Thank you. The Township received a letter dated March 18th from Samuel Garrett, who is the Business Manager for Mary Mother of the Redeemer Parish, requesting that the Township consider waiving the fees for the associated permits for their annual summer festival, which this year is being held June 17th through June 21st. The Board has waived permit fees for this event in the past and Mary Ann has advised that the fees are calculated to be $149.50 for the special event and the electrical permit.
Any questions? Okay, we'll make a motion to waive the fees associated with the permits for the Mary Mother of the Redeemer of the Church Annual Summer Festival. Any public comment? All those in favor? Item number 10, consider award of contract for the 2025 lawn care treatment. Agree?
Good evening. Public Works Department attended to obtain three quotes from three qualified and responsible vendors. Documentation has been kept on file indicating that only one of the vendors, Moyer Indoor Outdoor, provided us with a quote and is able to meet the specifications set forth by the Township staff. Per our phone conversation, Greengrass Lawn Care advised they would be 30% higher than another company and would give us a quote. Brightview Landscaping Services did not respond to any of our requests for pricing, so Moyer Indoor Outdoor has provided us with a quote dated April 2nd, 2025 in the amount of $20,813. The 2025 adopted budget allocates $50,000 in the Park Contracted Services Fund, which includes the funding for this project. So our recommendation at this time, per the quote provided, would be to award the contract to Moyer Indoor Outdoor, the only qualified vendor to perform the services outlined in our specifications.
Any questions?
Is this the only application or is this one of several that would go through the year?
We do one application a year.
And that's it, so $50,000?
We do one in the spring for broadleaf weed control and we also do a liquid fertilizer, which has a lot faster
So this is it for the year on this?
Yes.
Great.
Okay, make a motion to award the contract for the 2025 lawn care treatment to Moyer Indoor Outdoor, the only qualified vendor, in the amount of $20,813. Any public comment? All those in favor? Thank you. Item number 11, consider award of contract for the 2025 curb and curb ramp project. Greg Rea?
Okay, the Township received an open bid utilizing Penn Bids on March 18th, 2025 at the Township Building. Gilmore and Associates, the Township Engineer, reviewed the six bids ranging from $486,600 to $672,834.40 and is recommending to award the bid to Donnelly Concrete LLC, the lowest responsible bidder with a bid of $486,600. The recommendation letter and bid tabulation sheets are included in your packet. The Board authorized the advertisement of the bid at its public meeting on February 24th, 2025. A total of $579,400 was included in the 2025 capital investment plan for the repair and replacement of concrete curbing and handicap ramps. So our recommendation at this time would be to award the bid as recommended to Donnelly Concrete LLC.
Have we worked with them before?
We have not.
What do we know about them?
Gilmore has gone through all of their references and they've had very good reviews. So that's kind of the only thing that we have to base it on.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, make a motion to award the contract for the 2025 curb and curb ramp project to Donnelly Concrete LLC, the lowest responsible bidder, in the amount of $486,600 per the recommendation of Gilmore and Associates Township Engineer. Second. Any public comment? All those in favor? Item number 12, a request for authorization to purchase Ventrack Boom mower attachment. Greg Rea?
Okay, in 2025, the Public Works Department is scheduled to purchase a Ventrack Boom mower attachment as approved in the 2025 capital investment plan. Attached is a quote dated February 13th of 2025 from Turf Equipment and Supply Company, an authorized vendor under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program, to provide the requested equipment at the total cost of $20,251.45. As the time of the price is guaranteed, barring any unforeseen delays and availability, the equipment meets the specifications prepared by the department. Total $25,000 is included in the 2025 capital investment plan to purchase the Ventrack Boom mower. So our recommendation would be for the Board of Supervisors to approve the purchase per the 2025 capital investment plan.
How many of our mowers will this fit? Is it multiple?
This will fit one of our mowers. Yeah, this will be for the one Ventrack mower that's a versatile piece of equipment for us that we have several different attachments for. And we would use this like on the walking trails and any places that are growing out.
This is kind of the arm that comes out?
Yeah, it articulates.
What's their normal life expectancy?
I'm gonna say at least 20 years, we're hoping. That's our, that's our best guess, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the purchase of one Ventrack Boom mower attachment, model MA900 from Turf Equipment and Supply Company, an authorized vendor under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchase Program at a cost, at a total cost of $20,251.45 per their quote dated February 13th, 2025. Any public comment? All those in favor? Okay, now, consider the award of contract for tennis court improvements at Spring Valley Park. Agree?
Here we go. The Township received an open bid utilizing Penn Bids on April 3rd, 2025 at the Township Building. Gilmore and Associates, the Township Engineer, reviewed the four bids ranging from $261,160 to $40580 and is recommending to award the bid to Topacourt LLC, the lowest responsible bidder, with a bid of $261,160. The recommendation letter and bid tabulation sheets are included in your packet. The Board authorized the advertisement of the bid at its public meeting on March 10th, 2025. A total of $402,000 has been included in the 2025 capital investment plan for the tennis court improvements at Spring Valley. So our recommendation would be to award the bid as recommended to Topacourt LLC.
Did we use Topacourt before?
We have used them many times, yes.
And they've
We're happy with their work, yes.
Well, I'm thrilled to see all these things come in under budget. Good work.
How long are we expecting it to take and when will they get started?
That we still have to work out. We'll set the date once we get the authorization to move forward. I'm guessing it's going to take about a month. Probably looking around June, maybe July timeline. Somewhere right around there.
Weather dependent.
Yeah, weather dependent.
Okay, we'll go ahead and make a motion to award the contract for the tennis court improvements at Spring Valley Park to Topacourt LLC, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $261,160 per the recommendation of Gilmore and Associates Township Engineer. Any public comments? All those in favor?
And if I could just add one thing, that since the beginning of the year, all of our capital projects and purchases that are included in the capital investment plan have come in under budget. So right now, we're trending almost 30% under budget for capital. Which is a far cry from where we were a couple of years ago.
A couple of years ago. Excellent. Okay, item number 14. This is the topic, update on the Chicane Project for Gray's Lane Traffic Calming. I turn it over first to Carolyn McCreary. Any updates?
Thank you. Included in your packet is a letter that was hand-delivered to residents in the area. Also included is a memorandum from Chief Peoples concerning this particular initiative accompanied by information regarding the successful installation of similar traffic calming measures in other locations. Tonight, Officer Michael Jenkins with our Highway Safety Unit and Damon Drummond, our traffic engineer with Gilmore and Associates, are here to discuss this further with you and to answer any questions you may have. And as far as the letters, 200 letters were hand-delivered by our Fire Chief Wegman on Friday in the rain.
Okay, do we have anything, Damon, that you wanted to say at this time, say ahead of time before we go into? I think we'll start with the Board making any comments we may have and then we'll open it up for short for public comment to everyone.
We have monthly, we meet staff with our traffic engineers as well as representatives from the Highway Safety Unit and also our Public Works Department. We have a traffic engineers meeting almost every month. We go over our land development, Marian has also been there, I apologize, Marian. So we go over any land development projects that have traffic implications. We go over public works initiatives. When I got here, we were primarily seemed focused on public works because we had a lot of things that had been neglected that we needed to catch up on. We applied for grants, we were very successful there. But monthly, the Highway Safety Unit officers come in with their list of issues from residents that have brought to their attention. For example, when five points, we knew five points was going to start. We were hearing from residents in the Villsmark Road area concerned about people cutting through their neighborhood and cutting through recklessly, they don't have sidewalks over there. So the Highway Safety Unit did some directed patrols in that area. We tried to do education through social media, saying we know this is going to be a protracted project. Please be mindful when you're going through neighborhoods, we can't limit people from going through neighborhoods. The gray's lane, since I've been here, is one of the things that has come up regularly. As early as 2021, Gilmore Associates was asked to look at the area to see if there were any increased signages that we could put out, any kind of crosswalks. We discussed a number of items through the years, most recently in 2023. We considered everything from roundabouts because we've seen where they've been successful, but they would involve the taking of property and they would absolutely involve more of an expense, so we ruled that out. Stop signs, even though it's a township road, PennDOT does control what we can do on township roads, so we have to get permission. It's not just on state roads. Because there has to be uniformity in the municipalities and in the Commonwealth. You can't have Montgomery Township having certain traffic rules, but then you go into Upper Gwinnett and they're different and then you go into Landscall and they revert to something else and you go on the other side of the state and it's completely different. PennDOT approves those types of measures we do. We have to get permits just like everyone else. We do traffic signal permits, we do road, you know, permits. The idea of stop signs, we are not allowed to use them to control speed and we are not allowed to use them for safety. They have to be warranted. So there are municipalities that will put in stop signs. If they didn't do a traffic study that meets PennDOT warrants and they don't ordain it through an action of the Board, they are not enforceable. So if a ticket is given out and motorists does their homework, they would find out that they, we can't enforce it. So we looked at that. We looked at speed tables, which we can't use because of the grade of the road. So we looked at that, we looked at speed tables, which we can't use because of the grade of the road, and again, these are per PennDOT regulations. And Damon, if I'm speaking out of turn, please contradict me. And then it's also my understanding, you know, speed bumps in every community I've talked with. There are some places where they use them successfully, there are others where there's a concern. There's a concern for our public works employees in a snowstorm with visibility. And after, you know, a heavy amount of snow and they've been out for a while, if they fail to lift the plow, they could damage the truck as well as have an injury. And then for emergency service vehicles, fire trucks, definitely for ambulances going over speed bumps, you know, patient in the back. There's always been the concern about them going over these speed bumps. And from a practical perspective, if we put them on one street, why don't we put them on every other one? They work in boroughs in certain areas, but there are other traffic calming measures. If you go on a township street where there's parking on both sides, cars naturally slow down. If you're on a street where there's mature shade trees, the shade they give off on the road can serve as also a deterrent. We have a problem in this township with speeding. We talk about it every month. You saw tonight, the numbers you saw on the red light cameras on the school bus stops, which still, when I saw the numbers after a week, I was still amazed, much less what we're seeing now. We use every measure that we can and we take it very seriously. So red light cameras were something we never had before. We looked at PennDOT and said, we have a problem here. You know, we have these heat maps that are showing where our accidents are occurring, we want to do something. We gave them two intersections, they came back with five more on top of it, that they were giving us autonomy to put in. But we wanted to do the two first and see how this is gonna work, because as you know, officers have to review those citations before they go out to residents. Same with the bus patrol, you know, the school board came in and said, we want to do this initiative. We wanted to, you know, make sure that whatever we were gonna put in place, we had the manpower to review them, and then we signed right up. So when we came up with the chicanes, this was a, you know, thought out in the Traffic Engineers Meeting. You know, we understood the hesitancy and there was some reticence, but it was a tool that was available and we said, let's, let's consider it, let's bring it forward. So it was mentioned at the Public Safety Committee Meeting. It was brought before the Board of Supervisors because the cost was included in the capital investment plan. And the, to my understanding, the contractor who does the lines called us and said they were available to come in, and they were given the go-ahead to go in and put them in. Unmined notes to Public Works, the letter that had been drafted had never gone out. And that's something that we own and we apologize for. We were fully aware that that was a miss on our part. We made representations to the board that we would notify residents, and through a number of errors on our part, it did not go out, and the lack of communication amongst the department. So Public Works didn't know, and I didn't follow up with the police to make sure that the letter had actually gone out, because it was gonna go out under the chief, just because we wanted people to take it seriously. And that's how we got to where we are now. And then I asked Officer Jenkins and I asked Mr. Drummond to be here tonight, because there are, the Highway Safety Unit is out there on the front line. So I hear things anecdotally from them, I know what I see when I'm out there, but I wanted them to be here so that you could speak to them directly with any questions you have as far as how we got here and why we made this recommendation, and then why we went ahead with the installation.
So Carolyn's taken most of my spell already, which is great, great job. Just to give you some findings too, one of the things we did do is we did do a traffic count after we put the chicanes in. Let me back up for a second. The reason why we started the traffic, or looked at traffic calming here, is we saw the speeds on the road were higher than posted speed limit. Posted speed limit in a gray's lane is twenty-five miles per hour. What we were seeing out there was up to thirty-six, or eighty-five percent south speed, travel speed of thirty-six miles per hour. That's over ten miles per hour over the posted speed limit, it's actually eleven. And typically, when we see speeds over ten miles per hour over the speed limit, we start looking at traffic calming options. In this case, as Carolyn mentioned, we looked at chicanes, we looked at roundabouts, we looked at speed humps, speed tables. Based off our discussions, we thought the chicanes would be best. Now, as I said before, we did, we did do a speed study out here afterwards to see how much, in the first week, if it was effective or not. What we found was it was effective. The speed had been reduced by at least five miles per hour, which is typically what we would see with a traffic calming measure as this.
Okay, anything else? So I just wanted, and I'm gonna open it up for the board to speak, but I first wanted to just say that without a doubt, this has been a hot topic for, for a while. It's been a hot topic, literally a hot topic. And, you know, first, I want to also say thank you to Chief Wegman for delivering. We were very concerned, we wanted to make sure our letters got out, we wanted to make sure you got it. And I'm echoing Carolyn when I say, you know, from all of us, that we apologize, because it was brought up February of last year at our meeting. I think it was Supervisor Bamford that asked and requested for, to make sure something went out to the community. And we agreed, thought that makes perfect sense, because we do want to always communicate, and, and we failed to get it out. So again, apologies for that. So you're hearing all of the reasons why we went, moved forward with what we decided to do. One of the things I'll just share where I'm at with it, and then I'd love to hear with the board, and then I absolutely want to hear from everyone, that we're here now. And I would like to say, let's, let's see if it works, let's do some real traffic study. We haven't done, I mean, a month or a couple of weeks is, is not enough time to say it's a hit or a miss kind of thing. And then, and then circle back to, does it make sense to keep it, or do we, you know, revert back? So that's just my two cents, but I'm gonna open it up to the other board members to see if anyone has anything they'd like to say.
Before we get going, I did have a chance to speak to Officer Jenkins. You spoke about enforcement engineer, I'm sorry, enforcement, education and engineering. Can you speak to that a little bit before we start our discussion?
Yes, ma'am. When we look at traffic safety, those are the three Es of traffic safety enforcement, education and engineering. In this particular instance, obviously it came to our attention, so we began enforcement. We conducted several selective enforcement details throughout, throughout Gray's Lane, throughout the area in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three as well. In two thousand and twenty-three, we conducted thirty-nine details, performed thirty-four traffic stops for speeding violations. Of those thirty-four traffic stops that were conducted in two thousand and twenty-three, we found that twenty-five of them, at least seventy, seventy-four percent were township residents. Neighborhood, in the neighborhoods that were directly related to Gray's Lane, there was twenty individuals that were stopped. In two thousand and twenty-four, we conducted thirty-one traffic details. Twenty-six stops were made for speeding. Of those twenty-six stops, twenty-two of them were township residents, about eighty-five percent. And again, in the neighborhoods directly related to Gray's Lane, it was twenty, about sixty-four and a half percent. We tried enforcement, it wasn't working. The next step was education. We put our traffic display counters out there to monitor the speed, to bring awareness to the speed limits. We used our speed trailer, mobile speed trailers to put out there that flash your speed along with red and blue strobing lights. It still didn't work. The last E we have is engineering. That's when we came to the Township Supervisor, excuse me, the engineering meeting on a monthly basis. So when we came to that meeting with options, we presented options based off of the Pennsylvania Traffic Calming Handbook, which were also approved by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. And as a group, we came to the consensus that this was the most cost-effective temporary solution to see if something worked.
Thank you, thank you. I think it is important to note that it is temporary. We want to see how this will work, and then we can make it permanent, but we originally. Please let, please let us speak first, we will give you your turn to speak. This is about communication, this is also about engagement. So I appreciate it. I live right off of Canterbury, so I know the speeding that goes, as that cutoff goes both ways. Okay? One thing that I will say is that what I saw on the road is not what I saw on the aerial. Not was, that was not my understanding as wavy as it was. Was that put in place per the specifications?
It was. We did go back out there and measure it to make sure it was put in per the specs. It was the design of it supposed to be fifty-foot curves, and that's, that is the radius we did measure out there.
I'm gonna speak with my Realtor hat. I appreciate that you all came out tonight. I want to apologize that I was not at that meeting last February. If I had been, I would have brought up my concerns about what this could do to the property values. I can't put a number on it for you, but when I, what I can say is a yellow line indicates a higher traffic volume, which can negatively impact your value. I want you to know, I understand this, I do believe everyone here understands it. But we're in it. That's really all I have to say. I do understand that for the most part, everyone's home is the most valuable asset they have, and we are not here to hurt that. We are trying to calm the traffic so that people can have their kids be at the bus stop and can walk their dogs, because these are the complaints that we've gotten. It's a horrible position for us to be in. And again, I just want to apologize, if I had been at that meeting, we would have at least discussed that part of it. So again, thank you for coming out, and let's have a nice discussion about it and see if we can't come up with something.
Chief Peoples, I want to put you on the spot for a minute. One of the comments that was made, at least in several emails to me, was that traffic calming measures had been put on Walnut Street in Hackfield Township and had been subsequently removed. And I know I asked if you had time to reach out to Chief Tierney there and find out exactly what went on, if you could elaborate?
I did, I got minimal information on it, but enough from the chief that it was put in, it wasn't, there was not a lot of police input with it. It was in for several years. They did have some accidents from people hitting the curb, getting flat accidents, or sorry, flat tires. And there was, it's one incident of the vehicle that did hit a building, it was the front porch that it hit with minor damage. That's the, unfortunately, the most information I was able to get.
I thought I would just say a few words here. First, when it was approved back in February of two thousand and twenty-four, we were under the impression that the community would be brought into the conversation, that there would be conversations, that education, we would have been able to bring you through a lot of the information that was given to us, and we acknowledge that that did not happen. So we apologize for that. When it was approved, and I know Candace, you weren't there, but it was put on the agenda as you being the, the chair. So, you know, you know, if you, if you thought it might not be a good idea, I would have thought it wouldn't have been put onto the agenda. But when you look at the pictures that we did approve, it looks like a very reasonable approach, because, because, and I, I'm saying I haven't seen, I had not seen it at this time, we were looking at pictures. And we thought aerial pictures of what was going to be put in. The, the, the pros and cons of each of these options were put in front of us. We don't want to be penalizing people with tickets, we didn't want to put traffic bumps in place which might do damage to cars. We didn't want to put things into place that would have a negative impact on your, on this. What we, we didn't have is the input from you as a community. So I wanted to make sure that that was well-known. Everything is on the table for, for me. I can't speak for everyone, but anything and everything is on the table. I think that this is a possibility for working, but also your input, which wasn't given, is something that we need to take into account now. And that, to me, is the utmost, utmost important of why we're here tonight to hear from you. So that's my statement.
I'm just gonna chime in to say that the communication around this project was a disappointment to me. And on behalf of my colleagues and our staff, we apologize for not being better communicators about this. But you've heard the testimony from our Highway Safety members and our traffic engineers about the persistent problem that we've had. And our first duty really is to public safety. I mean, it's, it's really central and core to our mission here. And so we were acting out of, you know, the best intentions to resolve a persistent problem. And on Gray's Lane, not in that particular section where this was installed, but we have had incidences where people have been struck by a car, by a vehicle. You know, two students waiting at a bus stop were struck and hit as someone tried to come through that section of the neighborhood. I live in that neighborhood. So this is, this is something that we took very seriously, took to heart, did our, our level best, using the data and the tools available to us to try to address. But again, we, we should have done a better job at bringing you into the conversation about what was happening, and for that, we apologize. I am encouraged to hear that the, the measure has been effective, so for all of the uproar that it has caused. Okay, okay, you're gonna have your opportunity to come up and say something, and I, and I want, we want to hear from you. We want to hear from you. So, thank you very much.
Okay, let me, let me, just one second, for a second. So we will now open it up for public comment. Let me just ask that you do have five minutes per person. We are asking if you could please sign in on the sheet, just so that we capture everyone's name and address. And then also, if you hear what it is that you wanted to say already be, be said, if you can, you know, just state that you agree or something, so that we're not, you know, hearing the information over. But it's open for everyone, one at a time. Sure. Oh, that's, that's fine. Yeah.
All right. My name is Dave Sherman, I live at one oh three Forest Trail Drive. I do want to preface the following statement, that this is my view, it is shared by many of the residents, but I do respect those neighbors that have a different opinion. I first became aware of the traffic control measures on Friday morning, the twenty-eighth of March, when the paint truck showed up to paint the squiggly lines on Gray's Lane. There, as you had mentioned, no, zero communication from the municipality ahead of time as these controls were implemented without public notification, causing confusion and chaos. The new traffic pattern eliminates street parking along this segment of Gray's Lane, creates challenging traffic patterns for larger vehicles like school buses, trash trucks and emergency vehicles, as well as snow removal vehicles. New safety hazards have been now created for joggers and bicyclists using Gray's Lane for outdoor exercise. Three residential homes front Gray's Lane in this segment of road, which creates an eyesore and does not align with the neighborhood's charm. This impacts the aesthetics of the community and curb appeal and value of the homes facing this stretch of roadway, as Ms. Chimera had mentioned. Two weeks following the implementation of these traffic measures, the township decides to finally issue a letter to the community regarding the completed work and apologizing for this botched communication. From my perspective, this further demonstrates admission that the township doesn't have the best interests of its residents and taxpayers. I don't have knowledge of the total cost of this project to the taxpayers, but as an engineering consultant for twenty-seven years, it doesn't take a genius to figure out that the traffic, that the township hired traffic consultants to use speed monitors, collect data over the last few years and analyze the data, design this outlandish traffic pattern that looks more like Lombard Street in San Francisco than an engineering control aimed to control the rate of speed through the neighborhood. In fact, what I've seen over the last two weeks are cars driving straight up the road, as they always have, and continue to drive at speeds in excess of the speed limit. Hiring a road paint truck and installing the chicanes and signage costs the taxpayers money and does not make it any safer for drivers and pedestrians. You could argue that speeding occurs on every road in America, on interstates, state highways, county roads, thoroughfares, and yes, on residential neighborhood roads. It's human behavior. This neighborhood has been operating in this manner for more than thirty-five years, and I've been a resident for sixteen. I'm not aware of any history of accidents or public safety incidents occurring during this time. The met, the incident that Ms. Bamford had mentioned happened at the corner of Gray's Lane and Canterbury by a drunk driver or somebody that was impaired by, with drugs. That was a different situation, and it wasn't anywhere near this area. Why change it now? Why change it now? If you want to consider safety as a cost benefit to the township citizens, start by repaving the roads and plugging the potholes on Upper State Road or Doylestown Road, where I recently hit a pothole that caused me $400 damage to my car. Not implementing silly traffic designs that make national headlines for poor planning and outlandish ideas. I ask on behalf of our community that you remove these traffic changes and return the, the neighborhood to its original charm. I want to thank you today for listening to my concerns and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just comment on one thing. Doylestown Road and Upper State Road are not township roads, they're state roads, so I suggest you reach out to PennDOT directly and voice your complaints. And if you don't get any response from PennDOT, please feel free to reach out to your state representatives to put the push on for them, because we have tried. We are as frustrated as you are with the condition of the state roads. I would argue that the township roads, they're pristine. Every road that's in this township that is ours is on a five-year plan in terms of being evaluated and prioritized for paving. And some of the things that we hear is that when we pave a road, people are concerned that now there's going to be speeding on it because it's freshly paved.
All right, yeah. I'm Mark Warner, 104 Pauline Sharpone. And my hearing isn't what it used to be, so if I'm asking repeats, that's why.
That's okay.
Um, I'm not gonna try to add on to what our neighbor just said, but as a retired engineer, I have a couple of comments I want to make. Number one, I want to thank the board and the township manager for getting out the letter. And your apology is accepted. I'm still gonna say it's kind of like closing the barn doors after the horses have left. But again, we appreciate the, the letter. Better late than never. Two, you know, I think we've all had moments where we kind of sat down or stood up, whatever the case may be, and said to ourselves, what the heck were they thinking? And I had that moment when I saw the serpentine lines being painted on Gray's Lane. What the heck were they thinking? So, the third quick point that I want to make before I ask two specific questions is, you know, I practiced for a long time, and I've dealt with data. I've done preliminary design reports. I've done design plans. I've done studies. But one thing I learned in over 40-plus years of being a consultant is sometimes common sense is the way to go. Common sense. So my two specific questions are, number one, what was the budget for what was put in? And number two, is the report that was done by the traffic engineer available for the public to see? Is that a yes or a no?
Regarding the report, this was a discussion between staff, highway safety, township staff. This is us looking at different options here. There was, I don't, there was not a formal report done with the chicane here.
So there was no formal report?
No, there was not. The, to get the concepts, the conceptual sketch is what we were looking at as we discussed other options also.
Okay. So there's a lot of ways of doing traffic calming. You know, you know that as well as I do. And, you know, I've looked at the couple of points that were in this letter, and I agree, roundabouts was not the way to go. I agree, stop signs are really not the way to go. But the third bullet, the speed tables, left me thinking. You know, number one, how do you, as a traffic engineer, define a speed table? As compared to a speed bump, as compared to a speed pillow or cushion? And, and part of that, number three bullet, just talks about speed tables as the greater the road, the road exceeds 5%. My understanding of the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration write-ups are, it's really 5% for bicycles, but it's 8% for vehicles. Am I correct on that?
That is correct. It is 8%. It used to be 5% at one point, but it is 8%. Typically, we do not want to see speed tables. Around 5%, it's one that we could do, but when, once you get, start getting higher than that, it starts to become troublesome. In this case, if we were gonna put speed tables in, they would need to be spaced at least 150 feet from each intersection, and we typically would do them in a series of speed tables. Once we start going further away from Doylestown Road towards Canterbury Road, your grade gets a lot steeper there. And that's where we were concerned about the, the grade at that point.
What is the grade at that point?
It is steep. We, as we discussed it, we, I did not go out there and measure it. I don't have that data with me right now, but
Would that be in the report? Do we get a?
Again, there was not a report that was written for this.
So there's no report that we can look at? What about, how much did this cost the taxpayers of the township?
It was $7,500, was approved by the Board of Supervisors last February, the second meeting in the month. $7,578.42. The, the actual delineators and signage were in-house and were put in by the public work staff.
Okay. And just a, another ending comment for me. Being retired, I have a lot of time. I do a lot of walking, and I do a lot of watching. That's the engineering thing. And I can tell you for a fact that what's out there now is not working, okay? I go for a walk just about every day, and I watch 15, 20 minutes as I walk up and down Gray's Lane. And I can tell you that people are still speeding. All right, I'm not going to tell you whether it's 35 or 40 or 50, but they're speeding, because I know what 25 is. And I can also tell you that they're not doing the serpentine. They're going straight as an arrow. So that's a problem. And number three, my last comment is, there's already markings. People have hit those poles or posts. So they're not going to last too much longer. So in effect, you've spent X number of dollars putting in something that shouldn't really have been put in in the first place, and it's probably going to have to be redone again sooner than you thought. So, thank you.
I'm signing. I just wanted to know if he had signed in. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
You say about communication. Well, we had a total total lack of it. If you realized you'd I did. My name, uh, my name's Ray German, 209 Gray's Lane. Okay? When you realize the letter didn't go out, you should have delayed it and notified the, the residents and not just went ahead with it, which you did, without any input from us. Uh, second off, you say the speed has been reduced. Maybe in that area. I'm at 209. I'm down at Twining Road. I'm in the corner house. Uh, Candace knows, and since she sold it to me. But anyway. The, what is it doing for the speed down there? What is it doing for the speed in the 300 block? It's doing nothing. You put it in one block. What does it solve? So what, do people go through there and then they floor it? Come on. You talk about common sense. There was no common sense. I don't care about engineers, engineering. I don't have an engineering degree, but I have common sense. And I'm telling you right now, it doesn't work. The people, when I go out to my mailbox to get my mail, I'm taking my life in my hands when I step off the curb because the people are going 40 miles an hour. So what you did is just ridiculous. You threw that money out in the middle of the street, and it did no good. And now you're gonna spend money to take it out. That's it.
Uh, my name is Nora Stout, uh, 107 Cove Circle. What? I just signed in. I, I think I did.
Yeah, so the, the names were, it's not so much that it was a list, it was just so that we captured your name, so that the person that takes the minutes, that we got everybody's name and, um, and address, but, um, so it wasn't any particular order. Just for, but if there's someone that has to leave or anything and you want to go next, just come up and sit closer to the front so we know. But, go ahead.
Um, so my name is Nora Stout, and I live at 107 Cove Circle. And every, so every, uh, school day, I have to walk down that street to my bus stop, which is at the very bottom of Gray's Lane. And almost every day, multiple cars will hit into the, um, poles as I'm walking down the street. And also, due to the, uh, the length and the way the lines are drawn, cars come so close to the curb that it feels like they're about to like, almost come like outside. And also, even if they are doing the swirls, uh, the swivels, they, the speed doesn't change too much in comparison. And it all, and also, if they will, a lot of times, even if they're doing it perfectly fine, staying within the lines, almost always hit a pole. And then when our bus has to go down the street every day, uh, the, uh, um, since the buses, they, um, just goes on for a line, even if it does do the, the, um, traffic pattern, or if it doesn't, it will always go over top of the lines and almost always will end up hitting a pole as well on its way down. And then, um, even, and then, sorry. When we, like, when we walk down and stand at the road, most cars will do the swivels and then just go straight like the normal speed they were. And genuinely, it feels more of a safety issue on its own of, uh, with the swivels than without them. Because even when cars were speeding down that road, and, and all the years I've been living here, it's never felt like I was in danger, but now that there are the swivels there, it feels like, I do feel like I'm in danger, and it does feel like much scarier just being on that road, walking down there multiple times a day than generally before.
So you feel less safe now than you did before?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Sharon Lighter. I've lived on Gray's Lane for 40 years. Anyone else be on Gray's Lane for 40 years?
No.
Okay.
If I was wrong, it was 40 years.
I've been around. Unfortunately, I just got this recently, so haven't been able to prepare in the way I would like. But I do appreciate that you care about this. I found it hilarious to see the way that, but if that's a, you know, a tool that can help us find some options, that would be a really good thing. When we moved from the city here, it was disappointing to realize that, yeah, now we have three kids here, and if they want to go for a walk, it's probably gonna be, have some risk associated with that. If I go to my mailbox now, there's always some risk, you know, I've got to watch for a while, so, because people speed, and I mean, you know that. They speed wildly. And that 25 for a while, it seemed to me like everyone, but you know, I'm driving 25 because that's important to me, and the car behind me is on my tail. You know, it just doesn't seem that people are really being, easy for me to say, right, but they're really being penalized. But also to celebrate this place, you know, if you see a sign coming into a complex and it says, welcome to, you know, whatever, or, you know, some way, we love our neighborhood. They're trying to get people to pay a little bit more attention to how you take care of a, a neighborhood. So I didn't get to do all I wanted to do, but who could I send some notes to? Who would that person be? It's anybody?
If you send it to me, I'll make sure the board gets copied on it, and if it pertains to our traffic engineer or our police officers, I'll make sure they're copied as well.
Okay, so having probably been the first person to move into Canterbury, so that very long time ago, thank you for letting me speak.
Hi, my name is Victoria Sand, and I live on 102 Cove Circle. When I got off the bus the day the lines on Gray's Lane were painted, I truly thought that it was an April Fool's joke. With all due respect, it looks like this idea was made on Bring Your Kids to Work Day, and I do realize that the safety of our development is important to you, and I really do appreciate that. But the possible outcomes truly concern me because no accidents happened before this road pattern was painted. In fact, I've personally seen multiple cars hit the poles, as previously said, and most do not even follow the lines, again, as previously said. My main question is, are we waiting for a major accident to figure this issue out? Again, I wholeheartedly appreciate your concern about the safety of our communities, and as a student, I walk up that road every single day. However, buses can no longer follow the lines on the road. Additionally, have you thought about winter? Because how are buses and large vehicles supposed to drive on the icy roads? This includes fire trucks, ambulances, salt trucks, large SUVs, and of course, school buses. You are therefore putting students and other members of the community in further danger. Again, are we waiting for a freak accident to remedy this, this, or, or come up with another solution? Clearly, there was no further discussion of repercussions. Clearly, none with you guys or the community. And I ask for the safety of all of us, please come up with a better solution. Thank you.
Taller than me, Victoria. I'm Diana Urbanati. My husband and my family and my three kids, um, we, we live at 106 Gray's Lane. We're directly, uh, it, a part of this is directly in front of our house. We're, it's right in our front yard. You can see it from every window. I'm gonna try not to repeat what people said, like you asked, but I, I'm gonna read from this letter too, because I'm super nervous, so. I'm pretty sure that everybody here knows now the situation that we're, we're talking about, and it's become a great story, and as you said, it is a hot topic. I mean, People Magazine, Mark and Kelly, Kelly and Mark in the Morning, Barstool Sports, that's, I mean, I, I don't see how that even relates to any of those, like, why this should be that important. But it just seems to show that it, it, it seems to be a very bizarre and drastic measure taken for the speeding that we've been complaining, I've personally been complaining about the speeding since we bought the house in 2013. So I too, do know that that is a huge, huge thing. All of this being said, I could speak for only myself and my family, but I know that everybody has already mentioned that the intentions from the township were absolutely there, and that they are so appreciated. Uh, we needed a solution to the speed for many years, and it's my understanding that the folks that get pulled over are primarily from the neighborhood. So that's, that's the very important thing to note. I read the letter from you, Carolyn, um, and I think it was, it was a great testament, along with Bill hand-delivering these letters in the cold rainy weather to the township that we have, because I truly respect this township. I really, really appreciate this township. We love living here. So this is actually very uncomfortable, and I hate feeling this way about what's going on with the traffic calming, but it needs to be done. We, it needs to be said. There are many people that are not in this room because it's North Penn Spring Break. They're all live streaming right now. But they did start a petition, which I'm sure you've seen, on change.org. It's about 186 residents and local residents who signed this petition for all the reasons that were stated in all of the online forums, I guess you could say the Montgomery Township, um, the news, the news and all that. Things that were previously mentioned, like bicycles and runners no longer really having anywhere to go. Those lines are so close to the curb, uh, you know. My son has also mentioned to me, my 12-year-old son has also mentioned to me, he's seen multiple people hit the chicanes, like, right in front of him. Uh, he said that cars even come much closer, like if the ball goes out of our fence, which I sat here, I don't know, 10 years ago fighting for that too, because our house is on Gray's Lane, but our side yard is on Gray's Lane, and it's considered my front yard, so I, they're out there all the time. And these balls will go over the fence, and he, he did mention that it's a little bit more scary now. He actually just told me that tonight before I got to the meeting. Um, so those are new dangers. And then we have very poor lighting on Gray's Lane at night, uh, like, it's very noticeable in the winter, of course, but, you know, like, I can say on Halloween- the winter, of course, but, you know, like, I can say on Halloween night, like, when we always walk around, we're always like, we have no light, like, no light here. So, and it's right there where this is all set up. Um, and I just think that that's just going to bring a little bit more concern, because this is really forcing the cars to go together, a little closer to each other. Um, and again, the large vehicles and buses, we've already done that. And, uh, again, neighborhood pride and charm. And I know it doesn't have to be about aesthetics, but we really do, if you go down, a lot of you live in there, like, people take great pride in their homes. I mean, you know, they work so hard, we, we, I just, it's just such a beautiful neighborhood, and love living there. And we take, like, we, we really try with our home, and I know everybody does. Um, it's, it's a huge eyesore. It's, it's something I would never, I would never even consider moving into a neighborhood. I, I actually, like, hey, I actually, well, I, I actually, I, like, it's almost to the point where I don't know how much, I don't know if I could look at that. But, and I'm being honest with you. But of course, safety is the highest priority. I just think, you know, that maybe we could talk about something else. And then, um, I know Candace already mentioned, but these are the two newest points that I was concerned about, was the double yellow line signifying, um, to somebody, uh, maybe somebody new who's moving in, um, that there is increased traffic, which is maybe increased noise, which is safety concern. So therefore, um, it will decrease property value. It's factual that it will decrease property value. And obviously, we have more expert people in the room who can tell, say, who have said that. And I think this goes hand, hand in hand with the chicane maintenance. So if what somebody just, like, what Victoria just said, and what my son said, I mean, because of the charm of our community, and because of, this is in a residential area, are we going to, how often are we going to maintain the chicanes? Um, they already are very scuffed. There's a couple of them that almost look like they have, like, burn marks. I don't know how, um, I, a friend of mine last night, I don't know if anybody is aware of this, but a friend of mine last night texted me, her teenage daughter actually, uh, hit one of the chicanes because the person was going straight, and she didn't, the depth recession, perception just wasn't there, and her headlight broke, like, her headlight cracked, like, she had a big, she had like a little accident there last night. I have no idea if they've called anybody about that. But, um, it was just something that she said the surfer team was just really hard to navigate, and I think it was early evening. Um, anyway, I'm rambling, but, uh, I also don't think there's been a significant amount of monitoring since it's been put in, and with all due respect, but like I said, I, we live there, right on the corner of Gray's Lane, and far as the first forest trail, if you're coming from Doylestown Road. Um, and it was a spec, like, it was a spectacle. I mean, there are viral videos online of people just going down there, just to, and, and we watched people go down like that. And I'm not saying it's gonna be like that forever, because of course, like, anything that's going to, you know, something new is gonna come along. But we're, we could have used a little bit of, you know, monitoring that, those times. Like, people are still doing it. They're still going out of their way. Like, I had a friend just say the other day, I used to go to MMR, and I just decided to go down your street, just to see what it was all about. Like, I, I got that that might be funny to them, but it's not funny to me, because they're, it's a spectacle. I'm sorry. Um, I have personally, I'm not there all the time. I, I work during the day, so I acknowledge that it's not all the time, but I personally not see much of a speed difference. In fact, I've, unless there's two cars there, and then I just see a safety, safety concern. But unless there's two cars there, I have not seen much of state, speed difference, even with the boxes when they were there. Um, I don't know, is we, I do have one question that kind of just came to my mind, but do we have any information on when you guys put the crosswalk in a couple of years ago? Like, did that do anything? Because I, that blew my mind too, but, um, kind of just like, let that go. But, uh, do we have, did that do anything? I don't, I don't expect anybody to know on the spot, but can we look into that? Because I just don't know. There's a crosswalk there, um, right at my corner, at the corner where we live. Um, but anyway, I, I just am asking, and I think a lot of us are asking, with all due respect, even if it doesn't seem like that, um, that we reflect on our concerns and maybe approach different, come to a different approach. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, Marty Sciccherini, ninety-four Forest Trail, right at the corner. So every day I see cars coming up and down the street. But picking up on Diane's last comment, the crosswalk, I worry about my property values, as you mentioned so before, uh, the yellow lines are gonna affect them. I think that crosswalk is affecting our property values. It's a helicopter pad in the middle of a neighborhood. That's what it looks like. Okay, let me get to my points. What warrants the need for a stop sign? You, you said it's not warranted, but what warrants the need for a stop sign? I mean, that, I'd like that question answered.
Warrants are usually based on the volumes for the main street and also the minor street. Uh, in this case, there was not enough volume, particularly on the minor streets, to warrant a stop sign.
So it doesn't have to be on the minor streets, just on the major streets? I, I, there are neighborhoods that, in, in White Marsh, where they have signs, and a nice, nice, nice sign that says, rolling stops cost you, yeah, a hundred and thirty, and full stops cost you nothing. And those are in neighborhoods. They're effective. I stop at those signs. I mean, and the police said, if they're not warranted, you don't have to, you can't.
They can't enforce them. That's correct.
Just put the stop signs up.
They're, you are not supposed to do that per PA law.
But they were. Okay. Now, you've said that you've worried about the concern of the students on Gray's Lane and their safety. Move the bus stops. Move the bus stops off Gray's Lane, if you're really that concerned about the student's safety. Simple solution. Common sense. The last question I have for, is, you, you mentioned that the speed only went down five miles an hour. I'd give it a week, maybe two weeks before it's back to where it was before. I mean, coming down a hill, gravity is gonna pull a car forward. If you start at twenty-five at the top, gravity's gonna pull you down. There's really nothing you can do to change gravity. And it's people's tendency, most of our neighbors, and most of the people here, are the ones that you're chicken. So I think that summed it up. Thank you.
I just want to add, answer Marty, um, you were worried about the crosswalks. That hasn't hurt the property values at all. They're, they've been crazy and through the roof and, and all good. So that hasn't hurt you at all.
Okay, so my name is Bob Lillo. I live at two oh two Gray's Lane. I'm the school bus driver. I'm the guy that's gotta drive down the street, not funny. Because if I go down there, that thing is eight feet wide and I with the mirrors. Another car cannot come up if I'm going down that chicane. If meets your point, it certainly slows down traffic, but you can't get to in there. The kids that drive through the neighborhood are not afraid to stick it in there. Okay? Last night, watched my daughter leave to go home. This kid came barreling around Ray's corner over forty. I don't know, he was, it was forty or better, straight down through the hill. That chicane hasn't done anything. I'm home almost all day long at random points of the day. Kudos for the effort. But that's not the thing to do. One of the things was, you were talking about snow cleanup, snow removal, come on. That snow plow floats right over a speed hump. Been there, did that. I do snow removal. Okay? The guys just had to be a little careful, like everybody else, to go over that. So those plastic sticks that are sticking up, you got all those plastic cups on the side of the road. So you pick those up, or you're taking them out. So that's, does that cost effective? Now you got the township guys out there taking all those plastic cups up, so you can do snow removal. So you're losing the effect of what you put down there. Okay? I see a lot of kids blasting up and down the street. I did an interview with Channel Ten at the end of my driveway. While this kid came up the street in a Tesla, the kid smoked it. He hit every curve, came up there. It was a challenge to him. It was fun. Okay? Last night, the kid came around the corner from Ray's house, coming down the street, over forty, and right down, he tapped the brakes when he got the Sciccherinis. Look, I get it. Somebody's gonna get smoked on that street, unfortunately. I, I pray it doesn't happen. Somebody's pet or something like that. Speed humps, speed pillows, start looking into those things. Well, I don't even know what a speed pillow is. A speed hump? Look, I drive a school bus, and I drive it in the school tent, in the school districts and central box and thing, and they have those things in there. Look, it slows you down. So if the ambulance has to slow down, I get it. If the fire truck has to slow down, I get it. But it's gonna slow everybody else down too. Do I want to drive over those things every day? God, no. But it's probably gonna be a lot more effective than what you have going now, cause somebody's gonna get hurt. You're gonna get head-on, and the first thing, all these people here are gonna go, I told you all of you. And we all vote. Is what it is. So thank you for your time. Appreciate the effort so far, but we do vote. That ain't it, gang. Sorry.
Lauren Chesterton, two twelve fellows way. Um, I'm not gonna repeat a lot of what everyone said, but a couple of points. One, the stop sign, I agree wholeheartedly. I've lived in this area for fifty-plus years. There are stop signs in so many neighborhoods. Um, I walk that neighborhood every day with my dog, every street. Once you get through the chicane, the worst part is after that on Gray's Lane, and it is the Tesla. And it's the teenage kid driving that Tesla. So figure out who's doing it, and give them the speeding ticket. Don't punish all of us. Don't punish all of us. Number one. Number two, I don't know who got the letters. I did not get a letter. I know some of my other neighbors, so I don't know who of the hundred and so people, I did not get a hand receivable letter in my mailbox, and I live in the neighborhood. So that was disappointing, too, when I heard that some people got some now, and still the rest of the neighborhood was not communicated with us. Um, I guess the only other point I have is, when you go out on the Upper State Road, similarly to going out into Doylestown, it's a downhill leaving our neighborhood. I can tell you how many times I've slid into those neighborhoods, into those intersections, because of the ice and the runoff in the different streets. You add a chicane in front of that, as she pointed out, now you're gonna flipside everywhere with the kids on the corners, cars trying to get up the streets, spinning their wheels. We're going down the street trying not to run into the intersection. It's just gonna be mayhem, because it's not gonna get plowed appropriately. We just have too much water runoff in that neighborhood to keep up with the ice. So, so I'd have to say, I'd like to see them out sooner than later. I was walking my dog that morning. I was embarrassingly on the news, because they asked me to be. Um, I did think it was an April Fool's joke. Um, and the other piece I'd say is the lines, the yellow lines to, um, Candace's point are ugly. You add in all these swivel signs, there are more S signs on that road than there are on River Road. From the time you start to the time you get down, I think there's three signages, between the black and yellow diagonals, the swirvy ones, and then the warning, hey, swirvy right ahead. It, it looks like a commercial, a commercial area, not a residential area. So I'll speak for my neighbors who are not here. Um, I have yet to hear one person like it in our neighborhood. Even if it has slowed it down, it's, it's, it's minimal, in my opinion. Um, people are going straight down the center. Um, I, I really was hoping to hear someone from our neighborhood say they liked it, just to make me feel better tonight. But I haven't heard anybody really say it's done anything to our neighborhood to improve it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren, it, Lauren, if I can just say, I, um, if you didn't get a letter and should have, sorry for that. Um, I do know, because I spoke to chief. Okay, because I, I do, I, I spoke to chief after he had, um, delivered them, and, um, he said, you know, where he didn't actually hand one to someone, he left them at the front door. So if, if there wasn't anything.
There's some other people in here who didn't.
Okay, yeah, no, yeah.
We can't hop into by helicopter pad.
Yeah.
Um, jump into the neighborhood.
Okay. Anyone else for public comment?
Hello, George Eddy, live at one oh nine Cove Circle. And yeah, Candace Schultz, our house too. Um, I do want to thank you for doing something there. Uh, my wife works from home, and her office views straight down that street, we're at the top of the cul-de-sac. And that has been a problem since we moved in. So thank you for doing something. Because as she sees, because she sees it all day out the window, it has slowed it down. We have looked at the township website, because I am very passionate about local politics and politics in general. I have seen the plans on there, knew it was coming. Execution, okay. But thank you for doing something, because while it does not look the best, I would rather something like that than to have a dead student or a dead neighbor. Because people are going fifty-five, sixty miles an hour. I know this because we have talked with Officer Byrne about clock speeds going down that section. So if it's this, I'll take it over someone killed and having to answer those questions. I know, I know. I live at the end of the cul-de-sac. I get it. I still travel that road all the time. I still have to watch my daughter go to school. I still have to, we still travel through the neighborhood. I get it. I understand everybody's frustration in the neighborhood, because it is frustrating to see that one day. But if the end result is, we're avoiding that worst-case scenario that everyone here does not want to talk about, I'm okay with that. Just because it's never happened doesn't mean it won't. You have people going that fast.
Excuse, excuse, excuse me, we want people to address the board, not a back and forth in the audience. That's all.
It's, you have people driving that fast all the time. It's a matter of when. It's not a matter of, did it happen yet? Well, it hasn't happened yet. Okay, we'll book away. That's all I'm saying.
I would just like to ask, that you said the speed limit has gone down approximately five miles per hour since the chicane was put in. I would like to know what the speed is down at Twining Road. And what it's doing for the speed, three blocks down. What good is this chicane do after the first block? That's what I'd like to know. Can somebody answer me?
It's something we have not looked at yet previously. I know this, the speed down the road. Speed down the road, we know, we have looked at that previously, and that was not as high as this section here. We were looking to. Yes.
I live at Twining and Gray's Lane. I go up to my mailbox, and I'm telling you, the cars are posing by, Bob, we'll test them, forty to forty-five miles an hour. So what good is that chicane doing for me?
So there have been previous studies up and down Gray's Lane. Um, when we looked at this section here, this is because the speed at this section was more than ten miles per hour above the supposed speed limit. And that is correct.
Excuse me, sir, if you could just give Mr. Drummond a chance to answer, and then that's all.
Typically, in areas of straightaways, you're gonna see higher speeds. And that is one of the reasons why we had the decision to look at the chicanes here, to, it's a vertical displacement that slows cars down.
Did no good for me. Yeah. Or anybody else beyond the first block.
So since this has been implemented, we have looked at this section here. There could be.
Looked at the other section.
We have not looked at that again yet.
Hi, my name is Heather Sand, and I'm at one oh two Cove Circle. Uh, my daughter just spoke not long ago. And I just wanted to say, we actually, um, a number of years ago, we used to live in the orchards, uh, right off of Stump Road. And as residents, we would ask multiple times the cops, because cars were going down pretty fast down Stump Road. And there's that blind spot. And I know that they know, because multiple people have come there, and they said that they can't put anything there. Now, there have been accidents, but they said there wasn't enough accidents to do anything about it. that they can't put anything there. Now, there have been accidents, but they said there wasn't enough accidents to do anything about it. And of course, I'm sure the township probably knows about that area. So we, when we moved here in Cove, I have to say I didn't have that same threatening feeling that I did when it was on Stump Road. That's number one. And number two, it is dangerous what was put in. It is not just that it looks absolutely terrible. It's not safe. I'm an educator, and I know that the kids that have to walk to get to the bus and these big buses and all the other large cars. For people who want to do the right thing, they are already bumping into those things. What else has to happen? Already, what is happening is that you have, um, cars that are deciding not to go through and do the whole zigzag. And then, you know, you have the cars that are trying to attempt, which means, like Diane was saying, you're getting a closer head-on situation. That's not safe. That is scary. And I don't think any parent wants to have their sons and daughters walking on that street when people are trying to maneuver. And for two blocks. I don't get it. Two blocks. I could understand if you're saying Grays Lane, I'm not quite sure I understand all the way through zigzags, but I understand. I also remember somebody mentioning that there needs to be somebody that comes in. If there's actually a particular car that keeps coming in, then there needs to be consequence for that car that keeps coming in. I'm just imploring you before there really, really is an accident, think about this now and do something about it that makes sense. Because if there is someone that gets hurt, that gets killed from this, it will fall on the township because you guys did not say anything to us to share our opinions. Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Megan Hall. I live at one sixty-four Forest Trail Drive. Um, I first just wanna thank everybody in the room. Um, uh, we've been residents here just for a little over two years, so we're new to the town and we absolutely love it. So I just appreciate everybody's effort and concern on this and taking action, as well as everyone that showed up here online, on video. It just shows that everybody cares about the safety. And it's not just the safety of drivers, it's the safety of residents, pets, children. Um, so whether there's differing opinions, I just wanna say thank you to everybody. Um, I will say, I agree with everyone who is against this intervention. Um, I'm not gonna repeat every single reason, but, um, I will say that my teenage stepdaughter, um, me and my husband will not be allowing her to walk on Grays Lane anymore, whether she has her dog or not. It just does not feel safe anymore. Um, my second point, I just wanted to bring up the topic, um, that was mentioned about the degree of the speed slopes or speed humps. I don't remember the terminology, but, um, if that could just be looked into again, because it sounds like there may have been a um, an error in the letter that said five degrees. Um, I don't know the specifics, but if that can be looked at again, it seems like there's a potential that maybe that could be thought of again. Um, and for what it's worth, the social media response to this just within twenty-four hours was, um, immense. I know some people can take social media with a grain of salt and people are way more opinionated online than in person. But it was an absolute outcry locally. Um, and not locally, was we saw, because it is just such a radical looking, um, something that no one has ever seen before. And I just really hate, I don't like saying that I live right there. Um, it's just, it is embarrassing. Um, if anyone looked at the, um, where everyone was signing online was for signatures. There's two signatures from Bridgewater, New Jersey. Those are my two parents who live an hour away, and they immediately replied because they said they don't want their stepdaughter or their two-year-old son to be anywhere near this location. Um, that being said, um, I appreciate everyone's effort on just putting in something in place that makes sense. I agree that common sense here makes the most sense. Um, I would love to come back if there's a proposal for something new. I'll be the first one here to state my opinion, whether I agree or disagree. Um, anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Hey, sir, could you, uh, let other residents who wanted to speak for the first time speak first, perhaps?
Hi, I'm Heather Leonardo. Uh, I live next to Megan. I wasn't planning on talking tonight. Um, I just wanted to bring up two points. Everybody has talked about the speed. I think everybody, ninety-nine percent of the community agrees. It's not a great idea. I just wanted to give you a little perspective. Besides everybody going straight down, hitting the chicanes. I've seen, we have a dog and we have a thirteen-year-old and we have other kids, and I've seen a lot of people hesitate, and I think somebody's gonna get rear-ended. Because you have someone driving down and they stop, and they, they're like afraid. They don't know how to handle the road. And then I've noticed recently, we have a lot of aggressive drivers. I know everybody mentioned the Tesla and that person, but besides that, you have someone that's not familiar with the road trying to go somewhere, and they're slowing down, and then you have an aggressive driver right behind them, like right up on top of them, and I think that's definitely gonna cause an accident. And I agree with everything else that's been said. That's all.
Candace, I contacted you about ten years ago, right after I moved in there, about the traffic. And you told me to call the police chief. And I spoke to him. And I asked him, why can't we put speed bumps in? He told me they can't do them. The township will not allow them because it could cause a person to lose control, have an accident, and sue the township. So my answer to him was, so you're saying that a lawsuit for the township is more important than a child's life? He didn't know what to say. So my answer now, or question now, is if we say, let's do an alternative, put in speed pads or speed bumps, whatever you wanna call them, will they allow it now? He said they weren't allowed.
To your point, I wanted to ask our traffic experts, um, to go back to the stop sign. What if we just had our own stop signs that were not meant to be enforceable, but they were just meant to stop people? What if we weren't looking to ticket people and could, is that something that legally we could do?
In my opinion, that adds liability to the township because those stop signs are not warranted. If there was an accident there, that could put more liability on the township.
Can I add too? In my neighborhood, we have a stop sign inside the neighborhood at the intersection of two roads, at Addison and Aileen. I would say at least fifty percent of the people that drive through there think of them as optional. And that's a problem, because if it's, if you are in a, in an intersection, and some people think that it's optional, other people don't, that's an accident waiting to happen. I just think that the risk involved with this for very, for various reasons. Uh, stop signs are something that we can't, um, assume that people pay attention to them and take them seriously inside of neighborhoods. That's my opinion.
And can I, I, I just wanna ask a question. So last week I was in Philadelphia, not other than going there for whatever reason, but I was in Philadelphia and of course, because of this topic, and it has been on our minds. When I tell you this has been on our minds, it's been on our minds. Um, I was going over speed bump over speed bump within Philly and residential areas, and I'm like, how are they able to do speed bumps? We said, we can't do speed bumps. So I, I have that as a que, I do have that as a question. I saw two there, types of speed bumps. I saw the ones that I call them like the big heavy rubber things where there's drilled into the ground. And then I saw it looked like it was, um, and maybe that's what's referred to as a cushion, where it looked like it was concreted over, like it was a part of the road, just a, a bump in the road. So um, how is, you know, and I don't know if you know the question, the answer to this question, but this Philadelphia, I mean, they were all over, and I had to slow down.
So the two speed bumps you just mentioned, and one, the one you bolt down is usually a temporary type of speed bump. That's one that can be removed um, at any given time. The other one sounds like a more permanent type of speed bump.
So I will say with the speed bump, I have some friends that live literally, the, the speed bump is in front of their house. There is a noise all the time. I don't know that I would want that in front of my house either. You know, there's just adding to the conversation. There's also the issue of acceleration. So people go over the speed bump slow, they go over the next one slow, they go over the third one slow, and then they for it because they're making up for time. That's just driver behavior that I've seen in areas. They're not and David, correct me if I'm wrong, they're not prohibited. It's just that the township has had a practice of trying to find other alternatives so that we're not putting them in one neighborhood, but then saying no to another. And as far as this, the stop signs, if you can't enforce them, why would someone stop? You know, to Beth's point, you know, people even knowing that they're there, you know, blow through them. We see people here, like, we tell people at our intersection, you know, I tell employees, just because you have a green arrow, don't go right away, because we've seen too many accidents here. We saw motorcycle fatality when we had a meeting in here, you know, a couple of years ago. So there's, it's just not that simple. And we thought that in terms of aesthetics aside, we thought this was the least intrusive thing we could introduce to try to see if we could do something to alleviate the speed on Grays Lane.
Uh, my name is Scott Urban. I'm at one oh six Grays Lane. My wife spoke a little while ago. I just said, not to touch on all the points that I totally agree with, but regarding the layout of the, of the swerves, um, is there supposed to be a distance between the white line and the curb? Is there a regulated distance between that? Should there be?
Yes, there is a distance between that. That is eleven feet, which is a typical travel lane.
Okay. So between the curve and where that white line swerves is supposed to be eleven feet?
Between the yellow line and the edge line of where you're.
White line on the outside. And I'm bringing it up because there is a section where that white line on the border actually goes up on the curb. So there is absolutely no space between the line and the curb. So if someone were to ride their bike, I have a picture of it as well. If, if someone were to ride their bike on the street, there is absolutely no space for a wheel to go in. And I will say from personal experience, at night, coming down that road where there is no streetlights, when you are making that turn in towards the middle of the road to navigate that swerve, the opposite car coming on the other side also was turning in. So there is a brief time where you look like you are hitting head on. Now, for a young inexperienced driver, that might cause them to quote, to get into an accident. So I just felt that was worth bringing up. But I, again, I, like everybody else, I appreciate the effort. I do. I just, I, I don't necessarily know if this is the best idea.
Earlier, we had mentioned that the township put up two red light cameras. What would be the possibility of putting up a speed camera?
It's not legal. Speed, I'm sorry. Speed enforcement is not, automated speed enforcement is not legal in the state of Pennsylvania, other than two locations on the Pennsylvania Turnpike and construction zones, and in the city of Philadelphia.
How about it? I mean, we just put up our, our red light cameras. Could we put something like that out there?
I'm not sure.
No, those were, those were approved by Penda at those intersections.
That's fine. Look, if it's not legal, it's not legal. I get it. But it was just a thought, because you had those up there, why not put a, put a camera out there to flash it. It's like a sugar pill.
That's what the speed trailer does. If you, I mean, if you see your speed, if you're a certain amount over the speed limit, you get the red and blue strobe, and people actually use it almost like a challenge. How fast am I going? You know?
I used it on my lawnmower. I got up to eleven miles an hour. But I get it. Look.
And we, you know, we can't use radar. I mean, I got a lot of emails, you know, from people who didn't live in the area, like just blistering emails saying, instead of doing this, you should reach out to Harrisburg. We're the only state in the nation that is not allowed to use local radar. And Chief Peoples, to his credit, has suggested that, you know, if we're concerned about it being misused, we could say police departments that are accredited agencies, which have met certain metrics, could be given permission. We have not, we have been fighting this for years. Um, the board has done resolutions. We have done letters. Um, we're just no further along than where we were before. But the number one complaint we get, and that's why we meet monthly, it's no longer traffic. Traffic moves through this township. It's now speed, and it's aggressive drivers. And we're just, we're just trying. We're trying with the tools we have.
A lot of it is just ignorance, or let's say a courtesy of your fellow neighbors to somebody said about being a pace car. I mean, I do twenty-one miles an hour up and down the street to piss them off, or just to get them to slow down. If it helps, it helps. At least that's one kid, or one dog, or one person that at least I can get them to slow down a little bit. So, look, anything you guys can do to come up with something a little bit better than what's out there now, I think would be a better solution. This one's, this one's not it. We missed the mark on this one. So that's just my own opinion. So, but I thank you very much for your time this evening.
I, I'd just like the board to consider doing a study to look at all the alternatives that are available. And with a definition of the cost that comes associated with each one of them. And also how realistic they would be for the width of Grays Lane. So again, something that I think the board might wanna consider.
I would like to just ask a question. Just a little informal vote. Who would vote to take it out? Would, and would anyone vote to leave it? So no one wants it. Just my informal vote. I just wanted to see that. Thank you.
I, um, I actually did the same as each of you came up. I'm doing little ticks here that are in favor, not in favor. Kind of thing, so.
We don't want it, but that's not saying we don't want something there that has put improved the situation.
That's the problem, because these are the alternatives that we are given to work with, within the frame of the law. If we take this out and leave nothing, we're again not happy.
It's not licensed to forget about it. That's why I'm saying, do a real study. Okay, I, I don't know what studies run these days, especially for something associated with traffic calming. But I think it would be well worth it to have something concrete that the board can use, that we, the public can see, and I'll leave it at that.
Just one last, I mean, I guess, once again.
Can, can people start coming up to the microphone? I thought that was the last comment, so we're just gonna ask you to.
I'm still stuck on this, what's warranted as for a stop sign. Uh, that's still kind of bothers me, because you haven't, you keep saying it's not warranted, but you haven't given me a real valid reason.
Warrants are based on, um, state laws, such, um, chapter. Give me one second. Got all my two twelve, our title sixty-seven, chapter two twelve, um, section one oh six C. It's also based on the MUTC manual, which is the manual on traffic.
Could you translate that?
Uniform Traffic Control Devices by Federal Highway. The, those are where we kind of, we look at the volumes there and other conditions to see where, if a stop sign is warranted. In this case, if the volumes are not high enough. Say that again?
Speed is high enough, but the volume isn't.
It's not based on speed at all. There, there is, there is a speed component to it, but it's based mostly on volume.
Like I said, I've driven through neighborhoods that have stop signs that have less volume than what this street has. Grays Lane is a major thoroughfare. It's a cut through.
So please, uh, please, no. So please, uh, please no shouting from the audience. If you want to make a comment, please come back up. Just trying to keep order.
No, I just want discussion about, I'm still stuck on that warrant.
To your point about the stop signs, we can't talk, we can't explain why they are where they are in other communities. I know of communities where they've put them in, where they don't, and the term warrant, it's not like we use it generically. It's not warranted. There's numbers. So if, if the numbers don't support it because of volume, we cannot by law install the stop sign. PennDOT will not give us approval, which means the board cannot pass an ordinance and we cannot install them. If we install them without that.
Have you asked for exemption for this?
You can't. They, they won't give exemptions.
Again, if you want to come up, please come to the microphone.
Just because I've heard there, what, what it would require to, to get exemption from PennDOT?
To my knowledge, they've never given exemptions on anything. They have their regulations and we have to follow them.
That's correct.
That's why we couldn't just install red light cameras wherever we wanted. We had to get their permission.
Okay. Then in the townships that do have stop signs in neighborhoods, could we go to them and ask them how they got around this?
So I, I, where, where I live at in the township, we, and this could be, not to say that this is the answer everywhere, but we're private in there. It's our, we have control of it. So we are able to, so that's separate.
But I, I know there are other towns, with the cute little signs that say rolling stops cost you 150, full stops cost you nothing. That, that's not a, it's a neighborhood street. And it's, I don't know how that sign is warranted because that traffic volume is no more than ours.
I must go address one other thing with stop signs. When we, when you do try to install stop signs, this is based on research and history at a condition that does not require a stop sign. Usually you see speeds actually increase between multiple stop signs. You may slow down for the stop sign, then you increase your speed probably above the speed limit to go to the next stop sign, you slow down again.
You have no solution to this problem except for-
A stop sign is not as reliant to traffic calm. And that's stated by federal highway and PennDOT.
Okay. I just, okay.
Thank you, Marty. Um, just one question about liquid fuel funds and some of the implications for liquid fuel funds from, for making sort of these sort of unauthorized modifications. Is there, I, I was under the impression that there was some implication there or some jeopardy.
That is correct. You're talking about liquid fuels money that comes from the state. Um, you're allowed to use traffic calming measures that are per PennDOT's Traffic Calming Handbook. One of the ones that we chose was the chicanes, which is one that is allowed. And you would still be able to get liquid fuels for that. If it was something you're trying, like always stop there, that is not something that's allowed by the Traffic Calming Handbook, and you would not be able, you likely will not be eligible for liquid fuels on that roadway.
Okay. Thank you. So there's a financial implication for not following those guidelines.
That is correct.
Yes. Negative financial implication. I just thought I'd, um, share that for your benefit in why we're trying to adhere to these guidelines. Uh, because we don't, if we fail to, there's a negative impact financially to the township.
Thank you. Um, regarding the stop sign again, was the study done to determine if we had the volume on Gray's Lane? Because I find it hard to believe that Gray's Lane does not have the volume to warrant a stop sign. When there's a stop sign down the cul-de-sac of Forest Trail in Pauline, where there's way less traffic. But there's, there's a stop sign there. So again, almost similar, almost similar to the grade, right? Because we just found out tonight that it's actually an eight percent grade and not a five percent grade. So was that, was that research done into the stop sign as well?
Stop signs were looked at there previously.
Was the flow study done to?
Yes, and it did not warrant one there. At the other intersection, I believe that one was looked at for psych distance. And psych distance is one of the criteria that we can use in general judgment to look at. If it doesn't have enough psych distance, then that's a condition of, that's a safety condition where we might warrant a always stop.
Okay. I mean, in, in a, regarding the stop sign again, like it, it just seems like you would think about that being the common sense answer. And even if there are rules and regulations around that, is there a way that we can possibly think outside the box and kind of address this situation? Because it does seem like, no, no, I'm talking about the stop, like the stop sign. Like, I feel like that would, you know, if there's rules and regulations around that, like, why can't we try to combat that? Like a-
Again, I, I know it's repetitive. Mr. Urban has explained there's state guidelines we need to follow. There are negative financial ramifications as far as state funding if we don't follow them. One of the other factors I have in, that has not been discussed is, uh, if you put them in, there's also liability concerns of that. I have been in this conversation in other townships that, that I represent and similar debates have come up. Um, the township manager was asked to speak to the insurance carrier about those circumstances. And they said absolutely not. It would put the township in risk for litigation related to that. So I just wanted to be clear, um, that, that this is not unique to Montgomery Township. But these solutions have been looked at in other places as well. And, and in some other townships, yes, or there may be a circumstance where prior boards 30 years ago, put in, put in stop signs, uh, before regulations were cemented, or they just looked the other way and did it. But now that we're on notice and we're following the regulations and we're trying to be compliant with state law, that's not something as staff we can recommend.
Well, just regarding that flow study, is that public information? Are we able to look that up? The, the flows, the flow study that, that was conducted, are we able to look that up as public, as a public knowledge? Cause I'd be curious to see what, what volume you need for stops. And I mean, it's pretty bananas.
You can file a write to no request with the township and then if we have a public record, we'll produce it.
Okay. Thank you.
My question is that you said about the speed cameras. They're only allowed on Roosevelt Boulevard, I believe, in Philadelphia and Turnpike. Is that correct?
Yes, along the Turnpike and Construction Zones.
Well, we all vote every year. Can't we vote on this? Can't the public get the law changed? We change laws all the time. Why can't they be changed?
You'd have to reach out to your state representative or your state senator about your concerns. We have no impact on laws that are enacted at the Harrisburg level.
Alls we've heard tonight from here is excuses. No solutions. Thank you.
Wayne Beck, 207 Grays, I did not buy my house from Candace. I, Chief Peoples touched on the Hatfield Walnut theme up there, uh, with the traffic, uh, calming measures up there. I believe in Bucks County, it was over towards Newtown or Lower Meadfield Township. They had one over there too that they removed. I don't know if you want to look into that as well to see what study was done with that. What's that? Um, as far as the, the traffic study that was done as far as for a stop sign, I mean, how, what, what was the volume? What is the volume needed compared to what was on Gray's Lane? Is it close? Can you answer that question? Do you know that number?
I, I don't know that number off the top of my head. I don't have the information front of me right now. I don't have that number in top of my head for that previous study.
And, uh, for Candace, uh, you've been on this board longer than most of these people here over the years. And I've been on Gray's Lane for 19 years. This obviously isn't a new issue. I mean, what have you discussed in the past and why has it taken 19 years to come to this nonsense that looks like a drunk guy painted?
Well, I guess the frustration that we all feel is each thing that we think could work, we're not allowed to do it. We, you know, there's the, the state regulations, federal regulations, the things that I think would be fine to just put a stop sign up, whether reinforced it or not, but we can't. I, I think I would like us to relook at the speed bumps. I, I was, we're somewhere today and it said raise the plow. I mean, is that really that awful?
Really not. I do, I do snow removal as well, like Bob does. I mean, I've gone over speed bumps in different communities. It's really not that big of an issue. But if you get a four inch snowstorm and that, that blue tractor comes flying down Gray's Lane, you're gonna knock over the chicanes right down. They're gonna be done. They're gonna snap and come right back up again. So that's just a waste of money.
I agree.
Uh, and as the, I'm also at the top of the hill right next to Ray and actually in between Ray and Sharon. Yeah, they fly through there. I mean, the whole Gray's Lane is Gray's Parkway. I mean, they fly up and down the road. And then even if you come around Bellows, you pick up Canterbury, you come down Canterbury towards the Nets House, they fly down that stretch too. So I mean, it's not, I mean, the whole neighborhood, you know, between Gray's and Canterbury is the whole speed zone. So I mean, it's, I mean, when you get around Bellows, people slow down a little bit there, but you know, it's, I mean, it's not the only area that's really, you know, has a speed issue in the neighborhood.
I know.
Thank you.
I just have a, a couple of quick questions for the, mostly for the officers. You had mentioned that you did some citations for, for speeding in the neighborhood on, on a couple of occasions. And the data indicate that it's neighborhood residents mostly that are speeding through the neighborhood, not, not people that are cutting through. That if you can reread that, those data for me, that would, that would be helpful.
Sure. Okay. So in 2023, we do what's called traffic details. We'll set up there specifically for that. It's something too important to know also is that, um, like the township manager said, we do not have radar in Pennsylvania. We are stuck having to use antiquated speed equals just over time machines, uh, little handheld things. So anywhere you see the white lines, that's where we set it up. And unfortunately, we have to see those lines to be able to run the speed. And the driver knows that and they see that as well. So speaking towards the actual speeding enforcement that we've been doing, it's also important to understand in Pennsylvania, using a speed timing device, we cannot stop a car unless it's doing more than 10 miles per hour over the speed limit. So we have to have a car that's going over 10 miles an hour speed limit. Typically, we do 13 to 15 to give a little bit of air, a little bit of leeway towards the driver. So that being said, to redo again what we did, in 2023, we did a total of 39 traffic details. That means that an officer specifically assigned to sit there for the speeding complaints on, um, Gray's Lane. Out of that, we stopped a total of 34 vehicles, um, throughout the year. Um, as far as how many citations were given, we didn't give out a lot of citations, uh, from speaking with Officer Burner, the Highway Safety Officer. He's the one that primarily did these traffic details because it was more of an education piece. Education visible out there, trying to get people to see that we're there and slow down. In 2024, uh, we did a total of 31 of these same type of details and we stopped a total of, uh, 26 cars. Um, again, if, if you're asking about the area for the residential, it was, uh, 22 of those cars or 85% were township residents and, um, 20 of them were 64% were actually between Doylestown Road and Upper State Road.
So I, I'm just putting two and two together. 85% of, of the people that you pulled over and gave citations to are, are people that live in the neighborhood, correct?
Uh, no, we didn't give many citations. It was mostly an education piece.
Okay. Just an education piece, but they were-
I can't say that citations were an issue. I just say from talking to Officer Byrne, he said primarily it was, uh, just warnings for speed.
Right. Okay. So I, I'm just gonna give you an example of, of something that, I don't know whether it's warranted or not, it's manpower. There's, there's, for those of you familiar with Doylestown and driving up the 202 Parkway, just before you get to the main highway section, there's a little outlet there that police officers hide at all the time. Okay? The speed limit is 40. People go through that area at 60, 70 miles an hour. It's, it's an easy target. I've learned, because I drive it all the time, that there, there could be a police officer there and, and I just, I do the speed limit there. I think most people probably do the speed limit there. They're familiar with it. What's the harm in having police from time to time camp out on, either on Forest Trail or Pioneer or Cove? And it's a, it's a deterrent for, for people to, and all it takes is one time and money talks. You know, if, if somebody gets a traffic ticket for, uh, speeding in that area, I guarantee you they're not gonna do it again. It's just an idea, you know? And it, it's not speed bumps, it's not the speed humps, it's not these ridiculous, uh, serpentine curves. It's manpower and police and it's learned behavior as, as a community.
I would like to address one other thing with the speed humps that we've been talking about briefly here. There is a certain distance of 150 feet that you need to be from an intersection to have a speed bump. In addition, along that stretch, uh, not that same stretch, but if you go further up on Gray's Lane, the other issue then becomes driveways. Where are the driveways? Putting a speed bump across the road could impact driveways. That's one of the, that's one of the concerns that we had when we were looking at the traffic calming measures that we selected.
That makes sense. Thank you.
We would ask you to come up to the microphone, please. Okay. If there are any comments, we'd ask people to come to the microphone.
Anyone else?
How many, how many, how many cars do you have in motor pool over there?
We have 14 vehicles.
Okay. Do you have any that are in for maintenance? PM, preventive maintenance, anything? Park one on Gray's Link, just leave a dummy in there.
Right.
They used to do it on 309 when it used to come down 309. They used to put a, a dummy in the car with sunglasses and a cop hat. People used to come down and mash on the brakes. Look, I'm not saying it's just an idea. It gets your attention because you see one of you guys sitting on the streets and it doesn't cost you anything to park the car out there. Just to sit a car out there, put a dummy in the window, everybody laughs a little bit, we'll give it a nickname. But it gets, but it, it'll, it'll get your attention. If you come down a corner and you see a cop car sitting there, what's the first thing you do? You mash on the brakes. I'm just saying, it's like, it's, it's no, it's no different than the signboard you put out there. At least it's something different or mix it up a little bit. Just an idea. Instead of sitting here just like yapping at you guys. It's, it's an idea, something to use, something to try. It doesn't cost anything to park your car out there for a little bit. So another idea.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Bob.
To the gentleman who spoke about the Parkway, that was actually a request of a highly safety unit and public works installed that blacktop portion off the Parkway.
Yeah.
And to the comment about the people's pocketbook, um, I would have fought a $300 fine when you pass a school bus with the red lights on, would stop people or knowing that's $300. But evidenced by what we saw just in the report now. So I'm not sure pocketbook issues always work. You know, I, I, I love the idea because I do it too. If I see a police car, I'm very cognizant of watching and seeing what other motors are doing around.
If I get a moving traffic violation and I get points on my license and my insurance goes up, that's enough for me to stop doing what I'm doing and changing my behavior. I don't know about the rest of these, these folks, but, um, money talks to me. And so that, that's just a, an idea.
I'm also hearing that maybe Public Safety Committee, we need to come up with the standard process for residents to kind of put in their input then as well, request evaluations for their sheets. What do we do? How do we do it? Obviously, we apologize for getting out to you and the letter went out late and like all of that mix up. But maybe some processes might be something that help as well. And this is for the future. Obviously, we need to hit this head on and figure out what are we gonna do? We, we all live in the neighborhood. We all live in this community and the speeding is an issue. We want to try and solve it. I don't know that we're solving it tonight, but we are all listening and taking this in. I'm taking all kinds of notes, trying to figure out how can we do something about this? So like, thank you all for coming out here. This has been eye opening, but at the same time, it's like, okay, this is something that needs to be addressed. We need to know what we can do, what we can't do, what we want to do. Um, and have those, that communication and that feedback then. So appreciate all of you that have said anything.
And I, I just want to add to that. I mean, I heard a few folks say it to us. When I tell you we care about this, we care about it. We truly, truly do. I think that, um, and I appreciate everyone who spoke, especially the students hearing and people speaking about their kids. But the, the students that came out to share was impactful for me. This is just some of the things that I wrote. And then Bob, I think it's the bus driver?
Yeah.
Thank you. Cause I saw a video of a bus going through. Um, but it was good to hear from someone who drives a bus through there. I, I myself drive a very large vehicle and I've, you might've seen me a few times on your street, um, trying to navigate through. I had to slow down. I had no choice because of the size of my vehicle. Um, I did witness where someone coming towards me was coming straight, but when they got close to me, they had to kind of follow. They had to slow down, but they would have hit me, um, because just simply the sheer size of my vehicle. So, um, so there were some things that were eye opening for me, but everyone tonight, this was very helpful. This should have happened last year, but this was very helpful.
So one more question. If everyone here had their way, you would prefer it be removed and have nothing there? No traffic calming, nothing? And we go back to square one.
And we go back to square one.
What about an out of service cop car? It's four years old. You get taking it out and replacing it with a new one. Could you take that old car? And park it on a different block of Gray's Lane each week?
Yep.
Or each day?
I mean, something like that is certainly possible, but after a certain amount of time, everyone's gonna know that car that's just sitting there is an unoccupied car because it's not gonna have the markings on it.
Again, if you have comments, we'd ask you to come and speak at the microphone. Thank you.
You know, what do you do with your old cars?
We sell them.
Any final?
Yes, I, one final thought and sort of picking up on something that Annette said is that we do have a Public Safety Committee. And these are the matters that are discussed at those meetings. Those are regularly scheduled meetings on a monthly basis.
Open to the public.
They're open to the public and they're published. Those dates are all published on our website. I really strongly encourage you to come out to a Public Safety Committee meeting. And, and share your thoughts and we're absolutely going to be taking all of your feedback under advisement and. Discussing what can be done, what should be done, gathering more information, gathering more data. So thank you so much for sharing your thoughts. But in the future, please don't hesitate to, to attend one of our meetings or to attend one of the committee meetings and share your thoughts there as well. Yeah, your input is what was missing from this and we know that. So we're glad to hear from you and we will take all this is, this is what we needed. So I appreciate you coming out.
Okay. I think, I think this was our final item on the agenda. Motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.